Frank is abstaining.
She didn't get it, went over it.
I'm asking for an amendment to the procurement policy. In the copy of the procurement policy you have down in the bottom, the exceptions are the new addition for order use of state contracts, feedback contracts, emergency procurement and supporting accidental expense. We need the emergency procurement provision because our fire alarm panel has not been working for most of the month. A building is unprotected. We got an estimate for a replacement panel from our current vendor at $12,000. I went around to many different companies asking to get a quote for a replacement panel. It seems to be fairly impossible because they don't make the kind of panel that we currently have. By the way, panels could not be repaired because they don't know what they're parts for. The only way we could get a replacement is by replacing the entire fire alarm protection system, which would be far in excess of $12,000. So as an emergency, I'm asking the board to approve the repair to the existing panel. So the building will be protected again.
How many, so that the board understands, how many other companies did you reach out to that said they were unable?
I have written correspondence for Total Fire Protection and from, I think I named them two of the other companies here.
Total's expensive.
Yeah, and oh yeah, and from Cameon. They're both explaining what they would need to do in order to take control of the system.
So what did, what would they need to do?
They would need to replace our entire fire protection system. That's all of the pool arms, the smoke detectors, the sprinklers, rewiring, building.
And where'd we get a $12,000 quote?
From New York Fire Protection who we currently have a contract with and who'll install the current system.
Because that's cheap, $12,000 for a fire alarm system.
I'm glad to hear that because I thought it was $12,000.
Well, they're standing, so Total is gonna stand behind their existing model.
Wait, 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 Total, it's too different than, who do we have?
Total, I got, I have written correspondence for Total Fire Protection
Right.
explaining how they can only, they can't replace the panel. They can only take over our entire system. They asked for documentation that we don't even have in the village. They asked for, what are those drawings?
Well, we did have schematic drawings.
We have the schematic.
They were, they were the design drawings.
Yeah, they asked for a lot of things that we don't have. And then it would, again, be to replace the entire system and take over the service. And the same thing with the Cameon. They have correspondence that they can't just replace the panel. They would need to come in and put their whole syst, their own system in. I also verbally spoke with about three or four other vendors who told me to put that to it.
Gary and I have a relationship with Total Fire Protection.
Well, that's just that they were asking for a couple of those plans are called.
But they, they didn't give you a price.
What? They didn't even give me a price because
So
they, it does need more than $12,000.
I mean, I'll tell you, look, we can put them in all time because the Nassau County Fire Marshal now requires fire alarms in all commercial buildings in Nassau County. A storefront, regular storefront, 20 by 80 storefront building, that's just a retail clothing store, the fire alarm system is around $20,000. So if we can get it done for $12,000 and bring it up to speed, I think that's a, that's a, right, Gary, I mean, that's a good price, $12,000.
Be curious to see what.
Yeah. It almost sounds too cheap.
But Frank, no, no, Frank, they're changing the panel, they're just changing the panel.
But that's expensive. They're not replacing any of the
No, they're not replacing any sensors or doing any wiring. That's the difference. They're only, so just
That's why it's only $12,000.
And nobody else, they'll just replace the panel.
I think $12,000 just for panels.
They don't want to touch anybody else's work, which that's what I, that's, that's usually what we're trying to do.
Well, it's, it's also program, it's, there's a lot, it's a lot more, because trust me, our clients all the time say like, what? $20,000 or what? There's a lot more to it than, than just putting a panel in and it's
But putting only system, it's just all sensors, obviously, no wiring.
Yeah.
We got to put wiring through this building, that's, that's not easy.
Ronnie, is there some, like, what's the guarantee? Like, if you look at 12 versus replacing and going with somebody else, is there a warranty on this thing?
You know, I, I mean, I would ask for a warranty of at least, you know, maybe a couple of months.
They give you a year usually.
We, they said, we've been getting serviced by them since the beginning of the building. You know, and they've been reputable and reliable.
Look, we could
I, you know what, I, I do have the paperwork, it's in your packet. There is some warranty information here. I did not focus on it.
I mean, we could, Ronnie, get, we could get a price.
Oh, here it is, warranty, 18 months.
We could get a couple of prices for a full, complete, new system and see how the unit cost for the
That means that the building will continue to be unprotected. If there's a fire, no bus call and fire department.
And then the difficulty with going with a new system is because we don't have all the documentation that these companies require.
They want, oh, they want auto pad drawings, that's what it is. We don't have auto pad drawings for this stuff.
Since we don't have all the documentation
So we have to invest in that.
There would be a cost for that or whatever discovery they need to do.
They have to hire an architect.
They could scan it to make them work.
Yeah, I mean, that's not that hard, they don't.
Yeah, so that's, that's a full sort of request.
No, the reason I had to bring it up is because we have a new procurement policy. This thing, I, I couldn't approve it with, with our current revised procurement policy.
Because I could not get
Which we put in
I could not get an estimate to the same.
Which we put in to protect our tax dollars. But because we can't get quotes from anybody else, that's why we're approaching the board to approve this because it's not part of our policy.
Yeah, like, I think, yeah, we gotta have fires.
I know, and we get a call every day from the fire company and they can't believe we have
And I can't imagine a new system costing less than $25,000 in this building. Just not.
All right, that being said
Unfortunately, it's an unforeseen expect, we didn't know it was gonna go down.
Do I need to take a vote on this or no?
Oh, sure, let's, yeah. Motion to approve the agreement with the New York Fire Systems where you have
I'm doing oral vote. I, I'm okay with this.
And oral favor?
Yeah, your name.
Sorry, I, we were just wondering why we have two of the same thing.
I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry.
Motion to approve $12,000 to New York Fire Systems for a new fire panel.
Which is our, which is our current vendor that is gonna replace the panel, do the programming. We don't have to do a total system overhaul.
So yea, your name, aye.
Excellent. Mr. and Mrs. All right.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Something else is just to let you know, we're gonna be putting the Toys for Tots container in the lobby and we will be collecting until December 14th, when we have to give all the toys over to the Marines for distribution. And we have a food drawer that is ongoing benefiting the I believe it's the Food Bank at the
JCC?
JCC. I couldn't think of the name of the JCC.
I think this year we brought in a lot less food than in the past, so I will make a plea to the residents to please
Yeah, we have, we don't have too much.
Let's fill that box. It's pretty empty right now.
Okay, next, our attorney's report.
Good evening, so I just wanted to report on the ZVA. There were several applications that they dealt with on October 8th. First was a return that was for seven major drivers actually, and I think they come from the board trustees. This was a request to include a four-foot fence on the front yard on the eastern property line where fences are not permitted. The board did not make a decision that night, a reserve decision after hearing from both the applicant and the neighbor, as well as applicant's counsel, so that remains pending. The second was a 58 hue of rain. And this was an application that sounds larger than it actually in the end seems to be what the applicant was seeking, is to construct a two-story, a single-family dwelling. And they were seeking a number of variances. They wanted to include 5,200 square feet and change, which would be 25.7, 7% of block coverage, 20% is allowed. They wanted, they were proposing a floor area of 7,000 square feet where 5,000 is allowed. Ended proposing a rear setback of 10 feet where 25 is required, as far, as well as a rear yard patio setback of zero feet where the minimum requires 10 feet. And I want to do that rather quickly because the unique part of this is that this property is actually a larger property. A portion of it is in Flower Hill, a portion is in the town. So the premises that they own is 20,278 square feet within the village, but they also own a 14,287 square foot lot in the town. I think I have those numbers correct. And their argument before the board, it took place over two sessions, was that yes, we understand that for the village zoning purposes, you're basing all your determinations on that portion that's within the village because that's all the building inspector has to work with. But when you look at this property, it's a much, it's a much larger piece of property. As one looks at it, the requested variances will not be noticeable. For example, the request for the zero-foot setback, when you look at where that patio is, taking into account both properties, it's actually quite a distance away from the lot lot. So over time, the board's position, the ZVA's position was that they understood this. They were not opposed to allowing this. Also, taking into account, as you look at the neighborhood, this would not be a hugely different resulting structure. But the concern was to make sure that if this were to be granted, that in the future, you wouldn't end up with a property being chopped up and changed over time. So the board in the end did grant the variances. However, there will be covenants and restrictions in place that the applicant has agreed to and which will require that the properties continue to be used and function together. They indicated that they would agree with that. And in particular, even in their application, the board is holding to it, that the premises and the adjoining property in the town be used together so long as the dwelling exists on the village parcel. The additional feature to the board's approval was that there is a requirement that the coverage is to remain as it is proposed. And I'm trying to get Mr. Obensky, but I think that one of the key things was that the board wanted to make sure that they weren't going to be coming back to make more changes. So the idea was, okay, if this is what is going to be built, this is what the coverage is going to change. The coverage won't change over time. So if, for example, because they still have to go to town for some of this, if the town doesn't agree with some of their requests, and particularly with respect to the pool, which they do want to make some changes to, they have agreed that if they are going to make any changes at all, the amount of coverage being placed on that property will not change. So taking all, all that into account, the board felt that this request did comply with the requirements of the village code. And my thanks to Mr. Obensky, who did a lot of work in putting together all of the, the numbers for this. And the board took a great deal of time considering. The next application was on walnut land. This was a request for a pool being placed. It's on a corner property. So it would have two front yards. And what the applicant is seeking to do is to include the pool and essentially, I'll put the purpose with the pool and the fence within the front yard. This is on 124 Walnut. The interesting feature in this, actually, I just pointed out, is that the neighbor directly across the way on the opposing corner already has a similar pool to what this applicant is proposing. The discussion in front of the board really came down to two things. Again, I'll turn to Mr. Obensky, see if I'm missing anything. But essentially, they wanted to make sure that the landscaping that was proposed would protect visually from anybody passing by, that the fence that was proposed would be set behind any landscaping. And the third thing that came up was that there is existing landscaping on the subject property that is problematic visually. As, as people drive by, it creates an impediment because it's in front of the property line.
It's in the right way.
It's in the right way.
So then, and it's quite high, I think if I keep it high.
Yeah.
So that a part of the board's decision was landscaping has to be moved back through property line. I believe that was part of the conditions. That the fencing has to be behind the landscaping as proposed. And of course, this will have to go for A R C review. So the board did deem it appropriate to approve that and did so with those conditions.
And, and those provisions with the landscaping mimics what was approved across the street.
It's actually a lesser variance than, than was approved across the street.
And most importantly, because I attended that meeting, it's gonna provide a nice buffer for anybody walking down the street to be able to get off the street
Right.
if there's car underway. Right now, they can't do that. Max would agree that it's terrible that bushes all the way to the edge of someone's property right next.
Pretty bad.
Yeah.
And, and then the final application was on 72 Nolan Road. This was again, a request to construct a swimming pool and patio with pool equipment. The proposed lot coverage is 32.5%. What permitted is 30. It's not a very large request. And but appeared on behalf of the applicant to explain the, the purpose. This is actually, it's, it's a one-story home that exists. And that comes into some, some point in terms of the, the lot coverage that's there because it's spread out.
Right, yeah, as opposed to the two-story where you're getting the same square footage over two floors. So the footprint is smaller, so it's, it's a larger footprint to be in that one story.
So the board took that into account and also took it into account that this is not a large request. And after discussion, the board did approve that as well. Of course, I believe that will also be by A R C.
Thank you for that update.
My report. Thank you. Uh, any trustees have a report? Mayor?
I got a couple of things. Hold on. Frank Bayou in Cherrywood.
Mm-hmm.
We have, first, we issued a warning about the stop sign that's covered by the bushes.
Mm-hmm.
And we, the resident has done nothing about it, so we've issued violation. And very shortly, I think
Jack, uh, spoke to them.
Oh.
They're gonna take, they're gonna take care of it.
Okay.
Their last people gonna take care of it this week or middle of next week.
Because if not, we are gonna remove those bushes because you can't see around that corner. And that stop sign is covered up, so for the safety of everybody involved, that was, uh, looks like it's being taken care of, so thank you. I didn't speak to Jack today. Um, let's see, I attended a couple of interesting things. I attended the Police Commissioners Council meeting where we learned about their latest technology that law enforcement's using. I don't know if anyone else attended today's financial condition analysis webinar. I forwarded you the presentation from the State Controller. It's gonna be helpful when I do our budgeting. Mary Jo and I attended the St. Francis Veterans Day Flag Ceremony. Is it the first time you've been?
Yeah.
I was there last year. It's a great event. It's, it's really nice when they, when they open up to the community with all the great flags they have out there. It's wonderful. And then I attended yesterday the St. Francis Community Advisory Board presentation, where they just talk about all the great health and welfare initiatives that they are doing throughout the entire community. So that is my very brief update.
One thing, I, I attended the Art Guild, had a
Yes.
Nassau County High Schools, they had 75 students and had an art show and a competition. And other than the parking, which is a debacle if you're parking along Port Boulevard, they had no place for the cars. But they were very, very thankful that, for what we've done for them and
I am fighting left, man, for the Art Guild, yes.
So they're, they're very happy with the Village of Flower Hill.
Yes.
Are we granting parking exemption for Port Washington Boulevard for all of their shows?
Oh.
So that, you know, that people will not get ticketed because parking is
They usually have the public safety, the Nassau County Public Safety is usually there.
They didn't go the last time I was there during the summer. Everyone knows what gathered.
They usually make sure.
There was nobody there, no. That's the art.
Is there a tenant in one of those, the house there that they can't get out or something? What's going on with that?
It's a legal matter. The county is, last I heard, this is many months ago, the county has terminated his lease and the tenant is fighting that termination. There's actually also another person lives on that property, but I didn't know that. There's that, that's the tenant, but there's actually a caretaker that lives in the other property in the back. And it's like a requirement of historic buildings to have somebody live on the property, which I love because if there's vandalism or anything that shouldn't happen, there's somebody who lives there on the property. So I think it's a great thing. He's not a full-time caretaker, but that's his full-time residence. So there's always somebody there if there's some sort of issue, which is, which is great. Yeah, hopefully that gets cleared up soon because that gentleman takes up some of the parking that's needed for these events.
Any old business, new business? We have a request by Mr. and Mrs. Wall to amend our section 119 this, 1H, fence requirements. That section of law says that fences are, six-foot fences are permitted along Middle Neck Road and Port Wash, and Port Washington Boulevard. Mr. and Mrs. Wall applied for a six-foot fence behind their house, which is Port Wash, which is Northern Boulevard. And when Peter examined the code, he saw that Northern Boulevard was not on the list. I would just like to ask Peter, you know, his recommendation.
Well, yeah, um, I mean, I, I Before you get into the intent of the original ordinance, and it was properties that back into, you know, busy roads, Port Boulevard and, and Middle Neck Road, I don't know why Northern Boulevard wasn't, wasn't included in that.
Right.
It just, you know, it would, it would seem, if any road, that's busier than those roads out there, so.
But we do have a mechanism in place for someone to get said fence approved. We have zoning board, correct?
Of course, yeah.
So that is
I'm just saying, what seems, what seems reasonable in the code would, you know, if, if it follows that Port Boulevard and Middle Neck Road, I'm commenting on a code, are included in those, those roads where you allow six-foot. I mean, also allow six-foot fences where people have pools also, but
Is a six-foot fence a requirement of the state? Or is that our code?
No, no, first one.
No.
Is, is it the requirement that it be in the rear yard? Or is it also?
It doesn't, it doesn't say that, so, you know, so those, we have fences, you know, those six-foot fences on those, they also, we turn on sides also.
But knowing the houses on Middle Neck, since I live right by there, almost everybody who puts one of those fences up, I think only have the six-foot in the back, not on the sides.
Yeah.
So it's, it would only be on the back portion.
Right, it would only be the portion facing the road that's listed in the
Well, no, it's always this portion that's facing the road, I understand.
No, but it's It's, it's not the other three portions of the fence. It's only the rear.
The code doesn't say that, though.
But it only, it, it seems to be that way.
It just says on properties applying
No, I was trying to figure out it, because like, Middle Neck predominantly is back yards, but I think there's one or two that are front yards or side yards maybe.
Oh, you're talking about the ones that back onto North?
Where, where Northern Boulevard, it, it, and it's not always clear. I guess it's mostly rear yard, right?
It's, it's rear yard, yeah.
So what we're talking here is like 12 affected houses. I think 10 or 12. Ronnie and I counted the amount of affected houses. I, I think this is something that the zoning board should be handling. We have a mechanism in place for these types of things.
It would be quicker, it's quicker if the zoning board handles it than
Would you like, would you like to address the law?
Sure.
Yeah, and we're
You real, you realize to change the local law is gonna take months. Probably four months.
Yeah, we need three, get three thousand pounds.
You would get this, you buy our code, it would take that long. We can't just snap our fingers and change the code today. But the zone, you can approach, but the zone, the zoning board is the way to go to get this done as quickly and efficiently as possible.
Okay, so this is Mr. and Mrs. Kraus. Thank you, Ronnie, for talking with us the other day. I really appreciate all your help throughout the entire process. We initially applied for a fence permit back in June. We waited the amount of time that we were supposed to wait. Then again, on September 29th, we got a nice phone call from Ronnie, who was super accommodating and helpful and did everything that she was supposed to be doing and said that we just had to wait about eight weeks to have the fence perm, the fence code amended. So from September 29th till now would be about eight weeks. We waited exactly the amount of time that we were supposed to have waited. We got a phone call, we have it recorded, that it would not be a problem, would be presented, and anyone that lives along Northern Boulevard would be affected, it would be approved. People that live already on Port Washington Boulevard and Middle Neck Road already have this. They're already residing with a six-foot fence.
Our code allows it there, correct?
Your code allows it there, yes. But Northern Boulevard is an even more busy road than those other two roads. So we purchased a house that already has a six-foot fence. Our house already has a six-foot fence. In fact, when we purchased our house, we weren't able to close right away because we had an open fence permit that our attorney had to go to your, your Building Department. Building Department, you remember, and you had to, we, we could not close until one of your code enforcers came to our property and said that the fence that was currently at our property was up to your standards, in which it did. We have that open fence permit that was closed, and it said that our fence that's there currently
Was in compliance.
was in compliance. So the fence that we have there currently is a six-foot fence that we purchased the house with. We just want to replace the exact same fence because it's broken. We have multiple people that are coming over from the, I guess, station, the B P gas station, coming over the broken fence into our backyard, and we're completely exposed. Now, before I applied for this permit over the summer, I was fearful of living there because there's no fence in the front, it's broken in the back, in multiple places. I was really looking forward to, around this time, to be able to go ahead with the fence. When I first initially applied, I was afraid as it was. But now, let's add October 7th into the mix. How do you think I feel living in a house, being completely exposed with the climate that's going on in today's world? You tell me how you would feel with no fence in your, no fence in your front yard and a broken six-foot fence in your backyard. How would you feel living in a house like that in today's climate since October 7th?
I think that's like getting like a little more of a time with the zoning issue.
It might be, but that's how I feel right now, completely exposed.
So
I was told, and I can play the voicemail for you right now.
I don't think that's necessary to play a voicemail.
It's necessary, because you would feel the same way I do.
You know, when Peter went to write this, they did not, looked up the code to approve the fence. This was, I guess it was September, and he said, oh, look, it's, look, you know, it doesn't have Northern Boulevard. I said, oh, I'll just prepare a law and, you know, I'll prepare a law to cover Northern Boulevard. I don't know what this is reporting of. Is this a court recording of me?
Yes, I don't give you permission to play that.
You said, you said this voice.
The voicemail saying that it was
It was a mail?
Yeah, that it was a mail.
Yeah, because I prepared a law thinking, no big deal. And then it was there, it was giving me a bit. I just wanted to let you know that we are amending our village code to include six-foot fences on Northern Boulevard. So you just bear with us for like maybe about like eight weeks, you know, we should get that into effect. That's when Peter and I had just discussed it with that.
But that's, that's a conversation you had with Ronnie.
It was a voice mail that I had after I spoke with you.
But in subsequent conversations with Ronnie and with our building, I don't know if I spoke to Peter about it per se, the best way to have this done is via zoning board. That's the most efficient way to do
A zoning board requires applying for a variance. Money that we do not have right now, they could, we have to put that money towards a fence for our house. Fences are extremely expensive. For us to have to send out letters, multiple letters, and both for a variance, is completely not fair for other people that already live along
So what's not fair
Port Washington Boulevard and Middle Neck Road that don't even have to go through this. And I already have a six-foot fence in the backyard.
So if we were to change the code, it costs the village money. So now it's gonna cost the village between $600 and $1,000 to hold public hearings that we may or may not have to hold. So the village would then be paying, the other residents would be paying for these public hearings. I'm just letting you know, it's, it's
I've already waited like long enough.
Wait, no, why, my question is, she, she applied in June and it's November. Why is this like
She didn't apply in June.
I did apply in June.
She applied in June, and I believe was, her application was, was it denied, her application?
There were outstanding court issues that we had Which were resolved months ago.
Okay, so that was in June. So then when were those issues resolved? Let's have an accurate timeline here.
I believe July or August.
Yeah, that sounds like
And now it's November.
We waited quite a long time.
Okay.
We, we're a young family. We have a son. We have more kids that we're planning to have.
So, so you currently have a fence?
In the backyard. It's broke.
They're non-compliant.
And I, I understand it's a non-compliant
It's non-compliant, but you had a code enforcer come to our house before we purchased it
And signed off.
And signed off, saying that it was completely in compliant.
In January, before we had to close the house. So this was, this was signed off on.
So you have a current non-compliant fence?
That was for the previous owner to
That was on January 18th, 2023. Someone came to the house before we bought it, saying that it was in conformity with your code. Mayor? It is hereby certified that inspection of the building or structures noted below has or have been conducted pursuant to applicable regulations. Such inspections have been revealed, no uncorrected deficiency or material violation of applicable laws or codes. Such construction or work is found to be in substantial conformance with the plans and or other information on file with this office in connection with the building permit, signed by Ronnie on January 18th, 2023, before we purchased the property.
So I'm, I'm gonna let Ronnie, or Jeff, I think somebody wants to talk about it.
Sorry. We were trying to think of a solution by perhaps repairing the existing fence.
The fence is irreparable, we've had numerous companies come, and it's, it's a stockade fence, and it's broken and more, so it would cost us more money to repair it, to replace it. It's, it's over.
Can I ask you, you know, a simple question?
Yeah.
A five-foot fence is allowed.
I have a six-foot fence now, but people are already still hopping over from Northern Boulevard.
They're crossing Northern Boulevard, jumping over your fence to
There's a sidewalk, there's a sidewalk right behind it, there's a sidewalk right behind it.
And what are they doing when they jump over your fence?
They're walking through our property to cut through to get to Center Drive or wherever it is.
Those are cut through cars, we're right here at the gas station.
They're walking through, we have it on camera all the time, people cut through our fence.
Well, I'm gonna just play that, but if they're gonna jump over a six-foot fence, a five-foot fence is the same thing, if they're gonna jump over a fence.
No, well, I heard you jump over a six-foot fence.
Right now, it's just easily accessible because
And we're completely exposed.
It's probably gas or something they can, they can get through, but it, okay.
Do you open that push? What's your address?
Twenty Ridge.
Twenty Ridge?
Ridge East.
East?
So the question I have there is, they're saying that there was an open permit from before.
Before they purchased the house.
Right. So I just, what I don't know is, when that request was made, I would need to ask Mr. Obinski to check. I think, the question is, even if a permit was granted for the existing fence, and I don't doubt what they're saying that it was, if that was incorrect, if it shouldn't have been granted, the village isn't bound by that. But from the description here, I think it would at least make sense to find out when the original permit was requested, what was the status of the code at that time? I don't know how old that original permit, the original sentence was.
I mean, I could tell you that Mr. Gilley would approve six-foot fences on Northern Boulevard because I don't think we ever looked to the code.
We're not even, we're asking just to replace what's there.
Because it was a fairly new home.
I'll check into the records to see what was approved under that permit, and then that may, you know, sort of take a new
We're literally asking just to replace what's currently there, that's all we're asking.
Does it, I mean, I'm not doubting your word, but it would make no sense for someone to climb a fence on Northern Boulevard, cut through your property, when they could easily just walk 50 feet right here and go right up Center Drive.
You ask the people that do that, that walk over with the Gatorade bottles that they throw in our backyard. You can ask them that, I mean, come right over, our house is open, there's no fence in the front. You might as well come and see if the Gatorade bottle is left behind.
Well, you have no fence in the front.
We have no fence in the front, but the fence that's in the back is six-foot, it's broken in multiple areas from people hopping in. We are a young family, we have a baby. We do not feel comfortable letting him go outside and play in the backyard with anybody.
Is there some kind of temporary solution that they could do until we get this?
You know, I dumped out that the zoning board would grant it, so maybe we can grant free
The zoning board would definitely grant it.
Absolutely.
1,000% they would grant it.
Why don't we like to put a subject to
Just a white vinyl player fence, nothing bad.
Something that's changed.
Yeah, we're asking just sort of fix it back there. There's, there's just this brown stockade fence, one of those, it was a nicer fence.
The relief in our, the relief in our village code is the zoning board. Because I applied for the same variance for my fence, when I needed a larger fence to replace an existing six-foot fence. I had to, when I purchased the house in 2000, there was a six-foot fence there, a stockade fence. When I went to replace it seven, 10 years ago, I applied for a variance, I had to do it.
We've already waited quite a long time.
Is there a cost, is there a way, like, let's just cut this down to common sense, we're not making an unreasonable request. Is there a way that the village can grant, you know, expedite, I mean, when's the next zoning?
December.
We have a provision for existing non-conformity.
Just to say that we, the fencing company that we hired, they're coming, and like, they were supposed to come in a week and a half, because we were under the impression we were under the impression that they should, we were allowed to do this again.
Hang on a second. But if they, if they would like to we could wait, if that's something that this board wants to grant. But we haven't made this in place, we don't have the authority to raise somebody's and not looking to change the local law.
I have a question.
Oh, please, no, oh, sorry. You only want the six-foot fence in the rear, correct?
Yes.
Not on the side.
Exactly what we have now.
I think you're right.
We're gonna, if, we're gonna check, checking the original permit.
Install, get a summons, they have to follow maintain. It's something, you still have to go to its BZI.
Correct.
Do you want some water?
No, but, but they can do it after that, rather than have to wait for things.
Exactly, well, they can put the fence up there.
That's my point.
Just wait for something, and make them go then, but still have to go to BZI, at least they get the fence right away.
Or we could, because they're never going to sign our arse up with that, so then we'd have another BZI.
I mean, does it make sense, does it make sense to change, no. Does it make sense to change the
I know that.
Does it make sense to change the zoning, because now the neighbors will say, well, they got six-foot fence.
The neighbors do have six-foot fences, just saying now, they do.
Like I said, Mr. Gilley moves, they have six-foot fences, six-foot stockade fence.
Both of our neighbors on both sides already have six-foot.
I mean, the only thing I'm bringing up is that
I can't advise that, if Jeff can advise that, then great. I can't advise someone to do something against the home.
Yeah.
I can't advise it.
You're right.
I'm not allowed to.
You're right. So
This isn't like, I mean, there are people that cut down trees, and then they're, you know, this is like, I don't know. This is not unreasonable.
We are recording, do you guys want to, do you want to
Yeah, it's going to executive session.
I'm making a motion to go to executive session.
To speak to counsel.
Speak to counsel.
They can't take any action in there, they have to come out to take action.
To get water, I think.
It's on, it's, it's on. It's on.
Should I go do a tap dance?
Go for it.
Some little iron.
But I want to tell them, I just think it's just, you know, it's the right thing to do. What color is this?
Oh, that's mine. I was wearing it before I had to run downstairs, I was like, oh.
Sure, you can get any fence for less. It's just a matter of how you're getting it, but you're getting it.
If you see my mom, don't tell her. Because it's very early, so I have to
Eight parents with the kids?
What?
Eight parents babysitting?
I would babysit. No, we're saying, if you see my mom, it's not, it's really early, that's why I feel like this. It's still recording?
Huh?
It's still recording? Oh, no, just wondering.
I don't think you can pick up, you're like, it's not watching you, no, but Nobody watches it, don't worry.
Tomorrow's Thursday, I'm so confused. I'm so confused. It's Thursday. It's really, it's really, it's fine, but it's really Thursday.
So I'll let you guys enjoy it.
Yeah.
Because we would all go together, and then it's like, oh, we can't be here, we can't be around here. It's fine, honestly, it's Tuesday, Thursday.
To me, it's like, I'll go, and I'll open and shut, I hope it says Middle Neck Road, Port Boulevard. You got somebody coming to put down all of the white walls, because, you know. I said, you know, we always approve those, always, because we just assumed that was the goal. It's like, you know, makes the code have, it's just not discrepancy. What is this fake freaking thing? I know, you're sorry, I know. The thing is with zoning, if they keep seeing what the same cases come over and over again, they say, that's a terrible, this isn't fine. So what's gonna happen now is that we have to, if they don't approve this board, everyone else on the street, we have to give them a ticket to take down the fence, or come to zoning and legalize it.
I was talking about
This is a supervised contract.
And I still have to talk about it, but
I have a reservation, you don't have to stay.
You want me to?
Yeah, it's a nice fence, very modern, sway.
Green pens.
Yeah, it has the points, yeah, the choice is free.
Oh, is it?
I think so.
Josiah has one, but it's like always broken.
That's what we got, we want to change accounts, they're very bitter straits, and it's a straight shot right up Port Boulevard, easy.
I don't have to go over that.
Yeah, the condemned bridge, yeah, the bridge of doom. But then you go over the bridge.
Oh, shoot.
How do you park here?
Go park here.
It's two ways, where you could take stony time and go all the way around.
Under the bridge.
Under the train bridge, and if you just keep going, it's fine, right? Just if the train's coming. If the train's coming, don't worry, it's a straight business.
You're close one, I would go, you'll be okay.
I do that.
I just think that the school bus is going over that bridge, I don't like it.
Do the school?
I don't think they're allowed to.
It's probably
No, they're not allowed to.
I was gonna say, is it the top?
I don't think that it's too high, but they banned, like, the water, they, the acid, water that said they're not allowed to go over that bridge.
Yeah, because there is, you're right, because they assigned it sets only
There's a certain weight, yeah, I think it's too tight.
I really want to bicycle over it.
I do want to go very quick.
I know, I know, like, because, isn't that the car coming, I don't think it, no, to cause
I see, so, I'm agreeing, yeah.
I know, someone was laughing, sad. I think it was seven fans, didn't it?
Did you? Two or three?
Was it boss?
No. I haven't yet to see the show.
I haven't seen it either. I think there's a video of it on YouTube or something. Yeah, it was really good. He's very, he's very talented. Crazy, but he put on a beautiful show, like the lights would like dance to the music, it was like, here, and then there, and then there.
You have to know how like wire electricity, like, the whole place, like, the like tiny board was like
Yeah. Has to be like an engineer. You think there's a fistback on that?
Why?
I'm so fascinated.
We were almost there. About to be like, that is
Yeah, surviving one tonight. Thinking about the island. I'm married to Jeffrey now.
Especially like celebrity Jeffrey.
I'm so stupid.
I know.
Yeah, you're really stupid, you're a celebrity. I know, you know, everything. Did you see last night? It was like, weird, but it was like, one woman was up, and the other one was down, and she answered the one who was, who was, who was up, answered the question, and she lost everything, it was like
Oh, she did.
It was, yeah, but she put a lot on the daily double, and she couldn't answer the question.
Frank, where you going? I will make a motion to come back from executive session. So the board was, Jeff, you wanted to mention what we can talk about?
Based upon the discussion in the executive sessions, based on the discussion in the executive session, my understanding is that the board may consider a local law changing the provision, is it, the properties that back over the Boulevard similar to other properties. With respect to this particular property, that is, my understanding, there may be circumstances with respect to its legal nonconformance status, and the building respect will be seen from the homeowners off the records, whether or not will be seen from the home, it will result for records whether or not he would be approving an application to maintain. But that wouldn't be before the board, the building expected determination to make, and I think he has already started to speak for the home office.
All right, that sounds reasonable, thank you very much.
Okay, next is the Port Washington fire contract, it is up this year by.
I'm just, I'm just, I just want.
Certainly.
I'm, I'm just, I just, based on, I'm just wondering, Mr. Allen, could I have a chance to speak to them and explain circumstances?
Okay.
Thanks.
I thought Peter read it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, sorry, I'm.
So it's up this year, the contract code runs from June first, twenty four through May thirty first, twenty five, and the increase is eleven thousand seven hundred and thirty seven dollars. We don't have to approve it at this time, um, up to the board, if you'd like to, you know, somebody comes from the fire company to speak about the budget and the new contract.
I apologize, what percent is the increase?
What percent?
Yeah, I'm always interested in percent.
Two, isn't it?
I didn't want me to.
I think it was, I think it was, I thought it was two.
I left my phone inside.
Where do you go from?
It went. Well, I guess if you subtract.
What's the new number?
Okay, this, the total for this contract is three sixty nine, one forty three, minus eleven seven thirty seven.
You just have the number, the new number, the old, the old number.
I don't have the old number, but the old number is like, you know.
Somewhere around three fifty seven.
And it went up eleven thousand?
Eleven thousand.
Yeah, I think it was, it was, it was only a couple of percentage points.
Well, for the record, I want to know what the percent is, so our residents know what's going up, they're the ones who pay us.
I mean, I can do, we can do the math and include it, you know, in, in the mayor's newsletter.
Three point two percent, give or take.
Three point two percent.
Give or take, so that's three fifty seven and it went up eleven thousand?
We'll check the math.
Eleven thousand.
That sounds reasonable, yeah. I, I remember it being somewhere in like that two, three percent.
But my only, my only comment is, I was actually hoping it to actually not go up, because now that Port Washington ambulance service can bill insurance companies, they have another revenue stream, so they're getting a revenue stream they didn't have, and now they're asking for more.
Yeah, but they, they, they cost operator fire.
I'm just saying. I would hope, I was hoping that some of that revenue would offset.
It, it may, moving forward, but right now, it's.
I understand.
They, they have to build up the, you know, they have to build up their funds, so it could, it could very well.
Well, Frank, you live in Port Washington, you okay with three point two percent increase?
That's not my fire district, but.
It's not, Mary Jo, you okay with three point two percent?
No, no, that's, like, what is our fire, is it, is it Port Washington?
You're, you're.
You are Port Washington, remember, we're three fire districts, three.
You're four, I'm Roslin.
So, if you're one one oh five oh, then you're.
No, it's, it's where the fire district is, if the fire district ends.
The map is, the map is in the document.
And Frank, I'd like to look for Washington.
No, it's, it's south of Brooks, Brookside, I think, it's, it's in Roslin Fire.
Mary Jo, I believe you're Port Washington.
She's definitely, she's definitely Port Washington.
Yeah, it's, it's in the document, you see, the map, the coverage map.
Do we really have an alternative?
No, 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 I just, I just listened.
Let's go with the other.
We can start around Fire Brigade.
It is, it is our duty.
Contact the Plano Fire Department.
Right, it is because the residents don't.
No, sit down.
Because the residents don't approve the fire budget of Port Washington and definitely Roslin, it is our fiduciary duty as trustees to make sure, because we're the ones who in essence are voting for it, we're the ones who need to make sure that those dollars are spent wisely by the fire department. I have battled with the Roslin Fire Department for a while on their increase on their budget, which I think has been higher numbers than they should. So we need to keep an eye on all the fire departments, because that's our duty, so that's why I'm asking, if you guys think that's a reasonable rate, then that's okay.
Two percent?
No, it's three point two percent. They're looking to increase. And I know, costs go up, you, you fire equipment, the safety equipment, all the requirements, it's expensive.
The length is, low, low set, low set's going up, I mean.
Low set's gone up a lot.
Low set doesn't come from this budget, I think it's a separate line item, isn't it?
Yeah, it is a separate.
Come on, Frank, you give the low set meetings.
And I'm on the board, actually.
So do you want to hold off or approve it tonight, or?
Would you think is anything gonna change?
Get, get someone from the fire department to come in?
No, I don't think we need Chris to come in again, he came in a couple of months ago to discuss the, you know, stuff, you have a question, Gary, or?
Uh, do we know on average what that rate means, increase means in terms of dollars, on average?
Per resident?
Or per, per.
What's how much eleven thousand dollar increase?
Eleven thousand seven.
How many pen, residents do we have?
If I was doing one of my big spreadsheets, I could calculate that.
How many homes? Thanks, pay.
Uh, fifteen hundred.
Seven dollars and eighty cents.
Seven dollars per home.
That wasn't included.
But no, but just about, that's the whole village.
Only the people in Port, oh, right.
Thirty, twenty one dollars.
But Manhasset Lakeville is going up in Roslin, it's probably.
Frank, nothing is going down.
No.
It's like twenty dollars.
And you really had an option, I mean, if it's a fire requirement, you could not sign the contract, but.
No, I disagree, we can actually talk to them about the budget, the budget is voted on by the corresponding villages. So, I'm just saying, that's something for discussion, and Frank usually represents us at the Port Washington Fire District, I'd do the Roslin one.
But I wasn't, I wasn't at the last.
But if we're okay with the three point two percent, then we can vote on that. I just want the trustees to realize we shouldn't always be blindly voting on things, because these are, this is our residents' dollars. Okay, do you want to have Chris come in, or you're fine with it?
It's up to the board.
Well, you're, you're, you're a general representative, if you're fine with it, then I'm fine with it.
Um, I'm, but I can't speak for the rest of the board, it.
I'm asking you your opinion, Frank.
I would vote yes, but I, I think we should poll the board.
If I would, I would vote yes, for twenty, eighteen to twenty dollars.
Okay, that's three votes?
I mean, it hasn't gone, it hasn't gone up the last few years.
If we just possibly keep it twenty dollars if we don't.
Less than the previous, I believe this is less than the previous year's, we, that was quite.
Would you like to, let's poll the board.
And you gotta remember, because we.
All right, so is there a motion on the floor?
I will make the motion to approve the budget as presented.
Is first.
The fire district contract is presented.
There is a second, okay. Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Lodeski?
Aye.
Trustee Frankel, I think Mayor, Mayor.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure we had the discussion, we should never be blindly voting on things that are us money.
And finally, we have a resolution to change the official title of the village bank.
So Suzanne, you want to present all your hard work to the lovely board?
From First National to TD Bank, you have a rate sheet on the, of the last couple pages, and therefore from very, you know, decent rates. Um, in speaking with our representative at TD Bank, he's offering us some very comparable, um, rates similar to my, uh, my class. Um, he's also offering us, um, different CDs so we can ladder them, and, you know, this way we don't lock up all of our money at one point, um, and it's convenience, he's right here. So, I just thought, since our branch is closing and, um, we do make daily deposits.
Right, so most importantly, the most important fact is our branch is closing. So, A, we need to find a new bank, because this branch is closing. Two, the interest rates we were previously receiving at this other bank, I think were kind of miserable compared to.
Initially, when we signed on with them, you know.
But that, I'm just saying, currently, the rates with that bank is terrible.
No, no, no. Currently, you're like, no, no interest.
Is terrible, so by switching over to a different bank, we're gonna have the convenience of a bank here, and we're going to have better interest rates, correct?
Terrible. Yes.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
So we need approval for that, the next thing that I was.
For that resolution?
And Suzanne, it's not, it's not in lieu of, we talked about, it's not in lieu of night classes, it's in addition to.
No, 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 this is for our daily banking.
Got you.
We are daily banking, money that we have with night class is still with night class, we're not planning on.
And that's twenty five percent of our.
About twenty five percent of our funds are with night class at this point.
Now, so let's make the motion to declare TD Bank as a village depository, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mary Jo.
I'll play Mary Jo.
All in favor? Aye.
And I will reach out to TD Bank and let them know that we're gonna move forward.
So I was hoping for, and it's not in that email, so apologies that you sent, I was hoping to get the, because I do need the board's approval, correct? If we're putting money in CDs? Or do I not need?
Yes, no, it's a resolution.
All right, so we'll have to do it for next month's meeting, but I was hoping for this month's meeting, and I, apologies, I didn't read your email well enough. I was hoping that there was gonna be a recommendation in this email to decide what length of CDs we want to put our money in so that we have good cash flow, and we're not locking our money up for, you know, six month or nine month or something like that, so.
Right, I was thinking, once we got, I mean, that's why I didn't really get into that, but, um, of getting the counts established and then figuring out where we're gonna put it, but I was leaning towards like two and a four months so that the month, you know, the, all the money isn't locked up at one time, and then, you know, not more than six months.
So for the next board meeting, we will have a proposed schedule for the trustees to approve of, what's the proper term, tier, it's not tier.
Ladder.
Thank you, we will ladder our dollars appropriately, so we have enough in our general fund for cash flow, and then we'll ladder the rest of our monies, because we actually have six bank accounts, which I just learned the other day, I didn't realize we had that many, but we need to have that many. And we will ladder the accounts so that we are not tied up and have to take money out and get any penalties for that. So, we'll, we'll propose, you'll propose that for the board for the December meeting. Okay, anything else? We're good?
Well, next week, I know you sent out, I think, or maybe Ronnie sent out, there's a long island sound thing in there.
Oh, next Thursday, from ten to something.
Wednesday.
By a minute.
Yeah, all right, the thing from Sarah's.
Yes, is that Manhasset getting protection, I forgot which one it was.
No.
Ten, ten to two or something?
Something like that, I signed, I signed up for, assuming I can make it, but, yeah. I don't think we have to be there all four hours, but, yeah, it's, the tour's supposed to be interesting.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion.
Just one, one more thing, actually, I forgot to mention, I got a call today from St. Francis, and they're having a series of, they're calling them Walk with the Doctor.
Oh, they've been doing that for months.
Oh, okay, they wanted, now, if we could accommodate them in our clock, I asked them, just send me an email so that I could forward it to the board, um.
Yeah, they do it all, they do it all over the North Shore, and they, it's in their newsletter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So, do you?
Yeah.
We'd love to.
I'll just keep you guys posted, uh, as the women.
Who, who's, who reached out to you on that?
Um.
Was it?
She was the nurse that did the vaccination program here, um.
Oh, yeah, she's very nice, I forgot her name.
Lovely, yeah.
It wasn't Jassy, then?
No.
It was not Nurse Jassy.
They're all, they're all nice, they're all nice at St. Francis.
All right, I make a motion to close the, uh, November eighth board meeting, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, aye, Mitch, kill the computer, please.
Got them on.